Thank you, Sarah. Good evening and welcome to the August 1st, 2023 Joint Meeting of the Springfield and Lane County Planning Commissions. I am now calling this meeting of the Springfield Planning Commission to order. My name is Matt Salazar, and I am the Chair of the Springfield Planning Commission. I am joined by my fellow Springfield Planning Commissioners, Vice Chair Isaac Rhodes-Dye, and Commissioners Steve Schmunk, Andrew Buck, Seth Thompson, and am I missing anyone who's in the, in the meeting? I think that's all of us currently present.
Good evening, I am now calling this meeting of the Lane County Planning Commission to order. My name is Eliza Kishinsky, and I'm the Chair of the Lane County Planning Commission. I am joined by my fellow Lane County Planning Commissioners, Commissioner or Vice Chair Choat, Commissioner Dingham, Commissioner Hadley, Commissioner Kayler, Commissioner Lay, Commissioner Peacock, Commissioner Snyder, and Commissioner Riddle.
Thank you, Commissioner Kishinsky, and we're also joined by Commissioner Alan Stout, who's in the meeting as well. So thank you for joining us for this virtual meeting format. I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute and with cameras off until, until you are called to provide public testimony. This meeting is a work session where the public may attend but not provide comment. There will be opportunities to provide public testimony later tonight during the public hearing at 7:00 PM. Tonight, we're holding three work sessions and public hearings on the matter of adopting amendments to the Springfield Development Code. We are conducting this meeting jointly with the Lane County Planning Commission as the proposed Development Code amendments must be adopted by both jurisdictions. We will begin the work session on these items and follow with the public hearing at 7:00 PM. Now, for a brief statement regarding conflicts of interest. There are two types of conflicts of interest, actual conflicts and potential conflicts. An actual conflict exists when the planning commissioners or their family or business would financially benefit or suffer from a decision by the commission. Commissioners with actual conflicts of interest must recuse themselves. A potential conflict exists when planning commissioners or their family or business could possibly financially benefit from a decision by the commission. Commissioners must disclose a potential conflict, including the nature of the conflict, and then they can participate in the work session. And I'll remind you that all of these matters are being recommended to the, to our various City Council and Lane County Board. So in this case, in these cases, only a potential conflict of interest can, can exist. Now I'll ask the Springfield Planning Commissioners to please disclose any potential conflicts of interest. I'll start with myself. So I have two potential conflicts of interest. One is that I am a homeowner who owns real property in Springfield, and the other is that I work for Homes for Good Housing Agency, which is a real estate developer who operates in Springfield. And next, I'll call on Commissioner Schmunk.
Yes, well, I have a home in Springfield, but other than that, no conflicts or other such conflicts, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Buck.
Thank you, I have two potential conflicts of interest as I own a home in Springfield, and I am an insurance agent who does business in the area.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson.
Good afternoon, I do own a home in Springfield, but no other conflicts of interest.
Thank you. Vice Chair Rhodes-Dye?
Two potential conflicts of interest, one, I also own a home in Springfield, and two, I am a Realtor working in the community.
Thank you, and Commissioner Stout?
One potential conference, conflict of interest that I'm a homeowner in Springfield.
Alright, thank you, and that's all the planning commissioners for Springfield.
Are there any Lane County Planning Commissioners that have an actual or potential conflict of interest? And we'll do the going around the room as Springfield does, so I will start by saying that I have no actual potential conflicts of interest. Vice Chair Choat?
Hear me okay?
Yep.
I do have a potential conflict of interest in that I work for Jerry's Home Improvement that has a store in the city of Springfield.
Commissioner Dingham? We will come back, I saw him on earlier, he's there. Commissioner Dingham, we can't hear you if you're trying to talk, so we'll come back to you in a second. Commissioner Hadley?
I have no conflicts.
Commissioner Kayler?
I have no conflicts.
Commissioner Lay?
I have no conflicts.
Commissioner Peacock?
I have no conflicts.
Commissioner Snyder?
I also have no conflicts.
Commissioner Riddle?
I have no conflicts or potential conflicts.
Okay, petitioner, let's go back for Commissioner Dingham.
Looks like he signed out, so he may be trying to sign back in.
Okay.
So we'll come, we can come back to that in the, the public hearing, correct?
That sounds good to me.
Great. Alright, well, thank you, Commissioners. I'd like now to introduce Springfield Senior Planner Haley Campbell to begin the staff presentation regarding the stormwater amendments to the Springfield Development Code.
Thank you, Chair Salazar. Can everybody hear me? We're good? Okay, sorry. Sometimes we've had a little bit of technical difficulties with sharing audio for this presentation, so if at any point you can't hear me, please raise your hand or feel free to unmute yourself. I'm gonna turn it over to a pre-recorded audio, and it should play all the way through, it'll be about a 20-minute presentation, so I'll just ask that you mute yourselves, hold questions to the end, and I'm here to help answer them. So one second.
Hello, and thank you for attending this work session.
Sorry?
This work session to to discuss the stormwater post-construction requirements update. My name is Haley Campbell, I'm a Senior Planner with the city of Springfield and the Project Manager for this code amendment. You will also hear from Clayton McEachran, Civil Engineer, and Megan Murphy, Environmental Services Supervisor. In a minute, I will start the presentation. As this presentation is pre-recorded, you will hear from the project team at various points. Therefore, I ask that you mute yourselves and hold all questions until the end. I have set aside 10 to 20 minutes for Q and A. Stormwater is an important part of the community's effort to improve water quality, protect fish habitat, and protect properties from flooding. When we say "go green and drink clean," we mean it. The reasons are twofold. The first, and perhaps most important, is that Springfield's potable water supply is sourced from groundwater aquifers. By protecting water quality and quantity through stormwater retention, we can help recharge our water supply as the city continues to urbanize or ahead of potential climate change impacts like drought or unanticipated hazard impacts like flooding. And piggybacking off the first, our stormwater runoff flows from urban areas to storm drains, gutters, ditches, swales, or a system of pipes, and eventually ends up in the Mackenzie or Willamette rivers. Our stormwater system is not treated before emptying into our rivers and streams. To protect those waterways, Oregon DEQ issued the city a permit to address specific areas recognized as sources of stormwater pollution. In this presentation, we will cover what the MS4 permit is and what the permit requires, what this request is for, and what key changes are proposed. And at the end, we will have time to ask a few questions and hear from Commissioners.
Because stormwater runoff from urban areas is one of the main sources of water pollution and alteration of hydrology, it is regulated under the Federal Clean Water Act. In Oregon, the Department of Environmental Quality, or DEQ, implements the requirements within the Clean Water Act on behalf of the Environmental Protection Agency. The MS4 permit requirements are the primary mechanism for ensuring our water bodies are swimable and fishable. These permit requirements cover public education and outreach, elimination of illegal discharges to the stormwater system, preventing erosion at construction sites, and more. Directing runoff from urban areas to post-construction site runoff controls, such as rain gardens and swales, is one of the most effective ways to recreate natural hydrology and remove pollutants from stormwater runoff. The city of Springfield is mandated by its MS4 permit to require post-construction stormwater controls at public and private developments. This includes building new impervious surface and the replacement of old impervious surface.
As discussed earlier, the MS4 permit requires the city to reduce discharge of pollutants and address stormwater runoff from new development and redevelopment project sites in its coverage area. This presentation will address the seven topics for compliance with the permit. The city of Springfield must implement all required components of the permit by February 2024. With that being said, right now, we are in the adoption phase of the project. The stormwater team has drafted edits to the Development Code and Engineering Manual, or EDSPM, and the drafts are available for the public's input on our website or Springfield Oregon Speaks, our public outreach platform. We are holding this first Planning Commission public hearing and expect that deliberations will be in September. Once a recommendation is issued, staff will take final drafts to the City Council on November 6th. Approval from City Council and the Board of County Commissioners is expected in January and February 2024, respectively. Next, the city must adopt, through ordinance or other regulatory mechanism, a size requirement for project sites that discharge stormwater to the MS4 and create or replace 5,000 square feet or more of impervious surface area, or for development projects that disturb one or more acres of land. Runoff from these developments must be captured by structural stormwater controls, which are physically designed, installed, and maintained facilities that prevent or reduce the discharge of pollutants to minimize the impacts on water bodies.
The city does not currently have any barriers to low-impact development, but our current standards are scattered across several different documents, and some of it is subjective and hard to use. In the revisions to comply with the new MS4 permit, we have made changes to encourage development to use a low-impact approach to stormwater management. The proposed code and EDSPM changes will provide a clear way to meet the requirements using straightforward tools, especially for small-scale developments. We have adopted the city of Eugene stormwater facility size calculators to be used for developments less than acre in size, allowing non-engineers to design LID features into the site plan. The Development Code has clear allowances for using the vegetated stormwater treatment areas and required setbacks, and the vegetation account is part of the required site landscaping. The plant and tree lists have been updated and reformatted to be clearer and easier to use. A new section in the EDSPM has guidelines for use of pervious pavements to reduce overall impervious surfaces and meet the new onsite retention standard. The current code does not have any specific performance standards for runoff other than limitations on downstream capacity of the storm system, which could be difficult to establish and was subjective. A large part of the current city's stormwater system is at or over capacity, and this results in most current development being required to infiltrate as much water as possible onsite currently. The proposed standard is to retain a total volume of water equal to 1.4 inches of runoff from the site in 24 hours. The volume is the same as the city of Eugene and is based on data analysis of the historic rainfall amounts so that 80% of all storm events will not generate runoff from sites that meet this standard. For the sites that can meet this standard, we'll primarily do it with onsite infiltration and stormwater treatment facilities, and the use of volume standard encourages a low-impact approach to site stormwater design, and a large amount of the city of Springfield has soil conditions suitable for onsite infiltration. The city's proposed new code is also adopting all the same standard vegetated facilities that can be found in the Eugene Stormwater Manual, which when sized with the calculators are able to show if the site meets the standard for onsite retention. Where the retention standard can't be met, then the runoff is still required to be fully treated before leaving the site to a standard that removes at least 80% of the total suspended solids. This should be done primarily with vegetation and only mechanical treatment used as a last resort. There are clear requirements in the proposed Development Code for what conditions warrant a reduced volume in the case of limited infiltration capacity or no infiltration capacity available. In the case of no infiltration capacity available, a flow rate standard is supplied in the Development Code. The provided calculators already have this built-in as available options when site conditions warrant them, and where mechanical treatment is approved in this, the State of Washington's tape list is to be used for evaluating mechanical treatment effectiveness in meeting the required 80% reduction in total suspended solids. The site performance standard of 1.4 inches at 24 hours retained onsite and then quality treatment to remove 80% of the total suspended solids for sites that cannot meet this standard will work together so that runoff generated from new development in Springfield will meet the requirements of our MS4 permit, will maintain and restore a more natural hydrologic cycle, keep our stormwater drainage system from being overwhelmed, and help keep our rivers clean.
For projects that trigger the size requirements and choose to implement either the site performance or treatment standard, the city will continue to review and approve plans for consistency with the ordinance and development code. The amended Springfield Development Code outlines the requirements for stormwater study standards and their types. Two stormwater study types are permitted, a small-site stormwater study and a full-site. A small-site stormwater study may be completed for sites that are less than one acre in size, meet the site performance standards in the Springfield Development Code for stormwater, and does not contain or is abutting a floodplain or wetland. For sites that cannot meet the small site, a full-site stormwater study is required. Each stormwater study must contain a written narrative describing the stormwater management approach, a hydrological study map, a report that describes any impact to a floodplain or floodway, and calculations to establish runoff volumes, peak flows, and pipe size. This amendment project includes not only the Springfield Development Code, but also the Engineering Manual, or EDSPM. And there is an important distinction between the two. The Springfield Development Code governs land and development within the city's urban growth boundary, and the Engineering Manual contains standards and procedures for public infrastructure, including our transportation sewer and stormwater. As part of this amendment project, sections of the EDSPM that apply to private development, such as site plan review or land divisions, will be added to the Development Code. Construction specifications and design standards that only apply to public infrastructure approvals or that are non-mandatory guidelines will remain in the EDSPM.
Maintaining green infrastructure is crucial for ensuring the long-term effectiveness of these facilities and for meeting our water quality goals. The MS4 permit requires the city to ensure that structural stormwater controls installed in Springfield are operated and maintained to meet site performance standards. Developers are required to sign an operation and maintenance agreement and provide an operation and maintenance plan for each type of stormwater facility at a site. The operation and maintenance agreement requires the responsible party, typically the property owner, to regularly inspect and maintain their facilities according to the operation and maintenance plan. Operation and maintenance requirements include ensuring good vegetation coverage at least 90% at maturity with approved species, and maintaining soil permeability. This is because plants are the primary component of these facilities, removing pollutants and increasing infiltration. In addition, most of our drinking water in Springfield comes from groundwater, so it is especially important to have good coverage with healthy plants.
The city of Springfield's MS4 permit requires us to provide education and outreach to contractors, developers, planners, engineers, architects, and the general public about the impacts of stormwater runoff on water bodies and the steps that can be taken to mitigate these impacts.
This request is an amendment to the Development Code and a Type 4 application under Springfield Development Code 5.1.600. Amendments include various sections that involve the use of stormwater, specifically Chapters 3, 4, 5, 6, and the creation of appendices B through H. This includes Section 4.3.110 for stormwater management and the addition of specific words and terms that define stormwater treatment and facilities. Because this is a Type 4 amendment, it also requires review and recommendation by the Springfield Planning Commission and the Lane County Planning Commission due to an intergovernmental agreement. Through this IGA, Springfield administered the permit requirements within the UGB. Given the nature of the code amendments, the land use regulations are subject to this IGA.
So what are the key changes proposed? There are several sections that are outside of the main stormwater section of the Development Code that I will go into detail about in a minute. Amendments to Chapter 3 and 4 clarify and allow vegetation within structural stormwater controls and low-impact development in a campus industrial district, mixed-use district, public streets, and sidewalks. The main section of the Development Code that was amended for stormwater is SDC 4.3.110 Stormwater Management. You will find a summary of these changes in the Planning Commission Packet item titled "Key Changes", but for now, I'll briefly run through them. The definitions and applicability section of 4.3.110 A and B were amended to include specific definitions that apply only to the stormwater section, and the applicability section defines what a structural stormwater control is required. Stormwater Structural Control Section C was added to define the two types of performance standards required, a site performance standard to capture the first 1.4 inches of rainfall, and a treatment standard to capture at least 80% of the remainder of any rainfall not retained on site, up to the first 1.4 inches. The Water Quality Limited Water Courses and Riparian Area Functions of 4.3.110 6 and 7 were moved to 4.3.115 Water Quality Protection. The remainder of Section C addresses when permeable pavements, injection wells, onsite source controls for high-risk land uses, and rough-mounted equipment may be used. Section D, Treatment Standard Criteria, provides a discretionary option under the Treatment Standard Criteria when site constraints are present, including things like shallow bedrock, high groundwater, soil instability, soil contamination, and constraints under the drinking water protection area. Sections E through H are more technical in nature and address when a stormwater study is required, which is whenever a structural stormwater control is installed. It amends the previous stormwater study-type standards to permit only a small-site study or full-site study and amends the hydrologic calculation standards for a small-site stormwater study or full-site study. Finally, the operations and maintenance requirements in the EDSPM were added to the code to ensure all structural stormwater controls are properly maintained to SDC standards. Some additional amendments that were made to meet the MS4 permit include landscaping standards to allow vegetated stormwater facilities and to stipulate that low-impact development is a landscaping requirement; parking lot planting area standards to allow low-impact development and structural stormwater controls to meet planting requirements; and the allowance of curb cuts in parking lots so stormwater runoff may flow to stormwater quality facilities; site plan review applications which are triggered when stormwater improvements are proposed; and definitions were added to SDC 6.6.110 to define the frequently used stormwater terms, including evapotranspiration, low-impact development, stormwater or stormwater runoff, structural stormwater controls, total suspended solids, and more.
Several appendices were added to the Development Code with this code amendment, and many were taken straight from the Engineering Manual to be adopted as development standards. Major changes from the EDSPM version include amendments to the city's vegetation and street tree lists and to the typical stormwater facility details. During draft review, staff contacted local arborists and landscape architects to receive feedback on the city's vegetation and street tree lists. The lists have been amended to include criteria for approval of species not currently on the list and to be consistent with Eugene's Stormwater Management Manual. Non-native invasive species are not allowed in stormwater facilities, and only natives are allowed in stormwater facilities within natural resource protection area setbacks. A minimum of three unique species are required per facility for species diversity. As for the typical stormwater facility details, a provision was added to the swales, planters, and rain garden specifications to require a larger growing medium within the drinking water protection 0-2-year time of travel zone. This standard currently appears in the EDSPM and has been in use since 2010. The amendment gives additional pollutant absorption capacity to the stormwater facility. The approval criteria for this proposal are contained in Springfield Development Code 5.6.115, which covers amendments to refinement plans, planned districts, and the Development Code. They are shown on the screen and require conformance with the Metro Plan, applicable state statutes, and applicable statewide planning goals and administrative rules. The findings for these approval criteria can be found in the staff report. This request is reviewed as a Type 4 legislative amendment to the Springfield Development Code, which requires review and a recommendation by the Planning Commission and ultimately adoption of ordinance by City Council. Since the stormwater development criteria apply to areas outside the city limits and the city has an intergovernmental agreement with Lane County, the Lane County Board of Commissioners must also co-adopt the amendments for them to apply outside city limits. The next step is for the Planning Commission to meet again on September 5th to allow for ballot Measure 56 notice. ORS 227.186 requires the local government to mail a notice to every landowner whose property is proposed to be "rezoned" as a result of adoption or amendment of a proposed ordinance. Rezoning includes an ordinance that amends or adopts regulations that limit or prohibit land uses previously allowed in the affected land use district. Specifically, the proposed code amendments affect the uses allowed in the drinking water protection area by prohibiting stormwater infiltration facilities within 100 feet of any drinking water wellhead. Because this amendment would prohibit stormwater infiltration and affect property setbacks, Measure 56 notice is warranted. This notice was not provided within 21 days of the initial hearing on August 1st. However, the notice issue will be cured by continuing the public hearing with the Springfield and Lane County Planning Commissions until September 5th, 2023. At the September 5th work session and public hearing, we expect the Commissions to make a recommendation to the City Council and Board of Commissioners who will hold a joint work session and joint hearing on the proposed amendments on November 6th, 2023.
Thank you, Haley.
Yeah, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So that was the presentation, thank you everybody for sitting through it. I know it's a little bit of a long one, I just think that there's a lot of very helpful information in that, and it's a kind of a technical project, a little bit out of the wheelhouse of a planner, so it was really important to get, you know, engineers involved, the environmental department, planning, and, and our lawyers with the city are great too. So if you have any questions, I'm here to help answer them. Thank you very much for attending and listening.
Yeah, thank you Haley for that presentation, and thanks to all the staff who helped both of the presentation and with preparing these amendments for us to consider. So do any Commissioners from either Commission have questions before we close the work session and transition to our next presentation? Commissioner Dingham?
Thank you. This certainly doesn't seem controversial to me. I mean, everyone is gonna be supportive of finding ways to reduce stormwater runoff. The only thing that I can think of that the staff report really didn't address is, what's it gonna cost? You know, if I'm a developer and I'm building a 10-unit residential subdivision, what is going to be the incremental increase to each house in that subdivision? I mean, as much as we want to have, to reduce our stormwater runoff, we're also a little bit concerned, I believe, about housing affordability, and therefore, I'm wondering, again, what's this gonna cost? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Dingham. I'm happy to look into that a little bit more. The unfortunate part about this requirement is that it's coming down from the state, so it's, it's basically a mandate and not something that we kind of had a lot of leeway under, and maybe that wasn't quite clear in the staff report. It seemed like most of the things that we were able to kind of change or look into and kind of have a little bit of leeway on how we were addressing the Development Code were about those low-impact development or green infrastructure approaches. So you kind of saw us attacking some of those things in Chapters 3 and 4, and, and those were about mainly looking at how we were encouraging that green infrastructure in some of those districts. A lot of the sections that were specific to how we were addressing it, like the volume-based metric, the 1.4 inches of A lot of the sections that were specific to how we were addressing it, like the volume-based metric, the one point four inches of stormwater catchment that we had to. Meet, that was straight from our permit requirements. We did have a little bit of leeway on how much we could retain. But we had to meet that volume-based metric that was a requirement in the permit, so. Um, yes, we do have a little bit of leeway in how we are address it. But a lot of this, like I said, is coming from standards from the permit, which is coming down from the state, which means we have to meet.
Thank you. Christina, do you have anything to add for that?
Yeah, and a part of what I want to add is also to tee off to Clayton. Because I think that there are some, while we don't have a specific cost estimate, I do think we considered some. Um, factors for how to make the code more efficient. Um, and in making the code requirements more efficient, that helps to cut costs on development, I think. Um, matching to other, to what Eugene is doing helps to keep overall development costs down by creating sort of one. Regional set of requirements, and so if, you know, in that way, we're not um impacting. Um, the cost of development significantly, you know, more than it is across the freeway. And I also think that, again, it's the, we're not doing much, like Haley said, above the mandates of the. Permit requirement and then providing the flexibility to provide a treatment alternative is something. Um, that the city of Springfield pushed very hard for in actually litigation with the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality over this permit originally. So if that's background context, the commissions don't have, um, the original permit was much more restrictive. Um, and we worked on the affordability piece of it at the litigation stage. And and Matt Souter is also online, um, could answer questions about the flexibility that we fought for in the permit and how that's impacting the code amendments.
On the cost, most of the, especially the smaller scale developments that have coming in. They are adopting a plan that actually exceeds what we're currently requiring. In some cases, because there isn't a suitable public storm system to discharge to, they really don't have any choice. Uh, they they have to do this anyway, and that's going to be a continuing theme in a lot of the still, a lot of the areas around town that still have. Uh, developable areas. The other one is, we have, uh, through our systems development charges. If they meet certain criteria, which falls in line pretty close to what uh, our new requirements are gonna be. They get a substantial reduction on their systems development charges and possibly on their monthly stormwater fees if they infiltrate on site. And most places are electing to do that anyway, because it saves them money in the long run to go ahead and meet these standards before they were required.
All right, thank you staff for that response and uh, thank you for the question, Commissioner Dignam. Uh, next, I see Commissioner Stout.
Hi there, um, I, my question relates to something I saw on the comment from Sub about impacted wellheads. Um, tell me if I'm in the wrong area of this conversation. Um, will these adopted uh, standards impact any of the currently functioning wellheads? I believe Sub mentioned eight. And if so, how will they be impacted? Thank you.
That's a great question, Commissioner Stout. Um, so the main point of that's. Why we had to kind of extend this hearing until September fifth was to allow for ballot measure fifty-six notice. I kind of touched on that briefly at the end of the presentation. But uh, Sub came forward right when we were kind of getting ready to adopt this information and said, hey. By the way, we had a requirement in our original engineering manual before we made these edits. Um, to prevent infiltration facilities within one hundred feet of our wellhead. When we made these changes, that was kind of removed from the engineering manual, but we needed to make sure that it was codified because this was something that. Um, Sub, uh, our engineers, uh, O H A, our Oregon Health Authority, they all review. Um, infiltrating within wellheads as a pollution, uh, as not clean water. Um, so we had this amendment in place, now we're codifying it. And with this put in the code, we are essentially protecting any properties that might infiltrate. Um, from infecting those wellheads, and that's what you're seeing in that memo from Sub. Is essentially to protect all of those properties from um, affecting our drinking water wellhead.
Thank you Haley. Uh, Mark, do you have any additional information to add? I think.
Thank you. I'm in the library meeting room here. Um, but I just wanted to mention. We do have a representative, Amy Chinets from Sub here in the room with us tonight. She just, I think, I want to make sure I convey, she said the number eight Haley, I think, is the number of private properties. That are impacted by this hundred-foot buffer issue. It's it's not necessarily eight wellheads. It, the number eight is actually the number of private properties impacted, so just for clarification.
Thank you, Mark. Yes, that is correct.
Thank you, Commissioner Roadstye. I think you're on mute.
Thank you. So there was a mention of these infiltration facilities potentially lowering someone's stormwater bill. And I'm just wondering if we know yet how that might be calculated.
Um, briefly, we're still working with staff, it's kind of ironing these things out. Staff, meaning with the environmental services department that actually do the building. They have ranges of percentage, uh, percentage impervious on the site. And so if you can infiltrate enough water to effectively reduce your percentage impervious down to the next category, that reduces your stormwater bill. It's kind of a weighted average thing we work out. Like I said, it's currently, right now, it's kind of voluntary, but on sites that are already meeting this or exceeding the standard, which is quite, quite a few. Uh, they're seeing a big reduction, like I said, and it adds up quickly in that it pays for itself usually within. A few years, if not just a couple of years, depending on the site and how much they are able to actually infiltrate on site.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions on this item before we move to next? All right, seeing none, we'll move to the next item. Thank you, Haley, uh, for that presentation again. So next, we'll move to um, introduce Springfield Transportation Communit- uh, Planner Drew Larson. To present on the parking code amendments to the Springfield Development Code. Drew?
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, make sure I'm off mute, yes, I am. Uh, my name is Drew Larson. I am the transportation planner for the city of Springfield. Um, and tonight, we are discussing amendments to the Springfield Development Code regarding climate-friendly and equitable communities. And the parking amendments that are associated with that. Uh, so the proposed amendments are reviewed as a type four legislative amendment to adopt amendments to the Springfield Development Code. Applicable with within Springfield's urban growth boundary. Uh, this action involves amendments to the parking requirements with Springfield's urban.
Drew, pardon me for interrupting, but I didn't, you haven't shared your screen.
Oh, I did not.
No.
Of course I didn't. Thank you.
You're welcome.
From the beginning. Again, just to touch on a few things, climate-friendly and equitable communities is. Uh, the state mandates Oregon administrative rules, uh, requiring parking reforms in metro areas, including Eugene and Springfield metro. Um, so, let's see here, where was I? This action involves amendments to all the parking requirements within Springfield's urban growth boundary. Including eliminating minimum parking requirements and adding provisions for electric charging. Preferential parking for car pools and van pools and special standards for parking lots over one-half acre in size. The proposed code amendments apply within the city of Springfield's urbanizable area, including the urban growth boundary areas and city limits. Because the code will apply outside city limits, tonight is a joint planning commission. It's just on automatic on there, how do I stop that? It's not cool. Um, sorry about that. Uh, but yes, this requires a joint planning commission with both Lane County and the city of Springfield. So just a little bit of background, the climate-friendly and equitable community rules, um, commonly referred to as C F E C were rules. By executive order by Kate Brown, addressing to address climate change or the changing climate. The goals are to reduce greenhouse greenhouse gas emissions by increasing shared mobility while decreasing single occupancy vehicle shifts. Tonight's public hearing is discussing the removal of minimal parking mandates to mandates to provide additional housing choices. By freeing up land that is currently required for off-street parking or might encourage redevelopment of parking areas that are underutilized. Uh, there was two phases with the uh, C F E C parking requirements. The first phase uh, was implemented at the end of two thousand and twenty-two. This removed parking, uh, minimum parking mandates within a half mile of frequent transit networks. Essentially along the MX and Springfield and Main Street. They also uh, removed parking for a few different uses, including like childcare centers. So phase two is to be adopted by the end of this year, two thousand and twenty-three. Um, and there was a couple of different options to proceed with. Uh, city council at a work session, hmm, a few months ago. Gave staff the direction to repeal all parking mandates. So staff's recommendation or staff report and all code amendments were based off that policy direction from the city of Springfield. So I wasn't going to explore options two and three this evening. Uh, as briefly mentioned earlier, the uh, proposed amendments are to remove minimal vehicle parking mandates citywide. Uh, and add in provisions for preferential carpool and vanpool parking spaces for employee parking lots. Multi-unit residential, uh, must provide forty percent of the spaces with electric vehicle charging infrastructure. Now, that's just the conduit provided to the parking spaces provided, not necessarily the pedestals, but the the infrastructure will be there. And then parking lot standards for lots one-half acre or larger, that includes installation of solar panels. Um, these are a number of options here that you can choose, that a developer can choose from. That's installation of solar panels. Payment of a minimum of fifteen hundred dollars into a city county fund to support solar and wind energy development. Provide a forty percent continuous tree canopy or provide some sort of combination of the three above. So getting into kind of the nitty-gritty of the changes. Um, we have removed minimum parking mandates, uh, throughout the development code. This essentially boiled down to removing the word required anytime parking is mentioned. Now that we did, as you'll see here in a little bit, we did keep our table four point six two. Uh, which was our minimum parking table. We changed that to suggested parking standards. So this would act as a guide for developers that were wishing to provide parking, but not quite sure how much they should provide. And is also retained to calculate the maximum off-street parking. Um, and then the other provisions are the preferential carpool and vanpool parking. That's if a employer provides fifty or more parking spices, parking spaces, this is existing or proposed. A minimum of those is five percent has to be dedicated to some sort of carpool or vanpool service. It must be located closer to the primary entrance, be clearly marked that these are for carpool, vanpool only. And that they are only for vehicles designated by the employer as their rideshare program to eliminate those single occupancy vehicle shifts. Uh, as briefly talked about earlier, the electrical vehicle charging. Um, this is for both residential buildings and mixed-use buildings when five or more residential units are provided. Uh, they must provide forty percent of electric vehicle charging infrastructure, not necessarily the pedestals. Uh, current code or current building code requires twenty percent for commercial and multifamily. Uh, developments, so this will be upping that for the residential purposes. Um, and then again, the large parking lots, installation of solar panels, fifteen hundred dollar payment into a fund dedicated to solar and wind energy. Uh, minimum forty percent continuous tree canopy. And then they may provide a mixture of those two, uh, or of those three. Additional is providing thirty percent tree canopy or trees along the driveway. So trees are a priority within the climate friendly and equitable rules, so any parking lot will have trees and shrubs. Um, and that again is to provide a continuous canopy. Additional to the large parking lot, uh. Oh, they must uh, include pedestrian connections from right away and between buildings. This is currently in our code under the site plan review, but this is further nailing down the point that we do need to make things. Pedestrian-friendly, um, and be able to make a walkable community. Another one was shared use parking, uh, and this is permitting shared use parking between two or more land uses. Our code was not, didn't specifically eliminate that. But uh, we did want to put in a provision to make sure that we were in compliance with the rules. Uh, I think it was last Wednesday, the D L C V uh, provided comments regarding our. Uh, our notice and proposed code changes with them. Now, a number of the code changes were addressed in the legislative amendments that were submitted with the planning commission packet this evening. So they had a number of comments that we had not addressed in the initial, but we had addressed in the P C packet that's in with you tonight. But I did make a couple of changes based on those comments. Um, they wanted to make sure that for the large parking lots that we had, the proper measurements or how they are be to be measured. And that is to be measured based on the perimeter of all new parking spaces, maneuvering lanes, and maneuvering areas, including driveways and drive aisles. Uh, and then under the carpool and vanpool parking requirements, we did. We had in industrial, institutional, government, and office developments, they wanted it simplified a little bit more, so. The proposed change, uh, this evening is in commercial, industrial, and mixed-use developments with at least fifty percent. Uh, proposed parking spaces. And the last thing that they had provided comment on, um, is that they wanted to make sure that on-street parking conversions to like parklets. Bike corrals or other green infrastructure such as stormwater facilities for infiltration was uh, an existing policy with the city. And so I am proposing a, a, a new finding within the staff report to address that. Um, which would be on-street parking conversion to parklets, bike corrals, or green infrastructure as an existing city practice. But must be evaluated and approved by the city traffic engineer on a case-by-case basis. So it is a existing policy, it's just we would look at them individually. So similar to Haley's stormwater presentation, the criteria for approval are within Springfield Development Code five point six point one one five. Um, and the things that we review are the metro plan and its subsequent plans. Uh, the Springfield Comprehensive Plan, the Transportation System Plans, and any refinement plans, applicable state statutes. And uh, tonight, mostly the applicable statewide planning goals and administrative rules. Um, so as you can see in the staff report, I think that staff has demonstrated compliance with all of those. And so tonight, we are seeking um, adoption of the planning commission order and recommendation to be taken to city council. And the Lane County Board of Commissioners on November sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Um, thank you much, and please let me know if you have any questions.
All right, thank you for that presentation, Drew, and again, thank you to you and all the staff who worked on um, on these amendments. Do any commissions, commissioners from either commission have questions before we close the work session and transition to the net, the final item? Commissioner Kaler?
Thank you. Um, I didn't see any, any consideration of ADA parking minimums or protections is. How is that handled?
So, uh, thank you for the question. Um, currently, uh, ADA parking is provided when. Parking is provided, so if no parking is provided, no ADA spaces are required.
I was afraid of that.
And I can speak to that a tiny bit more, so we did um, try to determine what could be done. Um, towards that with the state Building Codes Division and Department of Land Conservation and Development. The way that state law works, um, local governments are not allowed to require more ADA parking than the table. That references the number of actual, actual spaces provided, so um, with not being able to require. You know, minimum parking, we therefore can't mandate a certain number of ADA spaces. There may be legal flexibility to say that each development needs one ADA space because we. Uh, the L C D staff had this convoluted way through their rules that said. ADA is not classified as a parking mandate under their definitions. Under their definitions. And so therefore, if you only require one ADA space. Then by the state building code, if you provide only one space, that one space does have to be ADA. Um, and because the space is only an ADA space, it doesn't mean the definition of a parking mandate. So that would have been legally permissible. However, mandating that developments that provide no parking have one ADA space regardless of the size of development. Um, did seem to see staff to be a bit unworkable in implementation and very difficult to ensure that there was any enforcement. So I think that um. The recommendation from city staff is that. The ADA continues to just be based on the number of spaces that a developer um willingly provides under state building codes rather than mandating one. ADA parking space for a development of any size. I hope that makes sense. It's a convoluted way through the rules and I have to answer more questions about it.
I'm a former building official, so I.
Oh, so you get it. Okay.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Hathley.
Regarding the um requirements for electrical infrastructure for future. Charging stations, where are the technical specifications laid out? For that infrastructure? Is that in state building code or what, what exists?
So it is in the Oregon Revised Statute. I don't have the exact number in front of me. Um, it is referenced in the code.
So that would tell the developer what gauge of wire he has to run, what size breakers he has to have and all of that stuff?
Correct.
Okay, that, as long as it exists, that satisfies my curiosity.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lay, did you still have a question?
Yeah, just a um, uh, just a curiosity, uh. Two-part, how, how was the fifteen hundred dollars in lieu amount come up uh um arrived at? And what account does that go into and what's the intent of that account moving forward? Is it to assist with, you know, parking or or? Uh, wha- what would that be used for or how it would be accessed?
So I, I think I can help with one part of this question. Christina may, may know how the fifteen hundred dollars was arrived at. That was in the Oregon Administrative Rules. That was the number that was laid out. I have, was not part of that rulemaking process, so I am not a hundred percent. But the funds are to go into an uh Springfield or Lane County Fund to fund future solar and wind energy developments.
And I don't know how that number was uh was determined. I think DLCD staff liked that number and proposed it to their commission. Their commission adopted it. We. Struggled to get explanation from them for why. Numbers were picked for various things during the adoption process. So I'm sorry, I don't have an answer to that.
Thank you. Commissioner Whittle?
Uh, yeah, just this kind of an off-the-cuff reaction. I, I hadn't noticed this, but then Charlesy brought it up about the. Uh, no disabled parking spaces, which to me seems. Not a good idea to have no uh parking spaces designated for disabled people. I understand how the staff got there, but it seems an unfortunate result.
Because you have one parking spot.
I do need to correct that. Um, I was reminded by Sandy Belson, who is um on the meeting, but a little under the weather, um, who's the comprehensive planning manager. It was the city council. Actually, staff. Brought that decision to the city council for their guidance on what to propose. And so it was the city council that weighed in. With that policy decision earlier on. Now, of course, the planning commission and like county planning commission can recommend what you would like to your board of commissioners. And the Springfield Planning Commission can make a different recommendation back to the city council if they choose to do so, but I do want to jump in real quick and correct my earlier statement. Sorry.
And I'm sorry, did somebody mention there's one required? I thought I heard someone in the background say that.
I do believe I heard the same thing. Um. But so if parking is provided, ADA will be required. So developers like, oh, I'm going to provide three parking spaces. One of those has to be ADA.
My fault.
And I will note that we are still in our uh work session. If any members of the public are joining us, uh, please do put yourselves on mute. Uh, you will have a chance to comment during our uh public hearings later at um after seven PM. Sandy, do you have, did you have any additional information to give on that item? And Sandy, uh, you are muted.
Yeah. Sorry, uh, as Christina said, I'm a little under the weather here today, but um. As um she explained, if you want to provide one ADA parking space per site. That is an option by requiring that one ADA space and we would. Um, you would need to include that in your recommendation and then we would forward it on, but it would only be one per site. Um, we could not require more than that. Um, and of course, people always have the option of providing whatever parking onsite that they want and. The proportion would be ADA per the building code standard.
Thank you, Sandy. Hey, Commissioner Schmunk?
Yes, just a few questions. Um, so uh staff, could you let me know um? These charging station requirements, are, would these be considered a barrier to housing?
Um, I mean, potentially they, I mean, they are going to cost additional money. Um. But I, with the, the way that the future of transportation is going and the Oregon is, you know, no. Gas vehicles by twenty thirty-five, I believe, or no gas engines by twenty thirty-five, the infrastructure. But will need to be in place at some point. And so doing it now versus a retrofit later will save money.
So, okay, so we're expending current funds for future benefit. I'm just trying to be clear about the issue. I'm not uh trying to give you a bad time about what you've done here. Obviously. Well, and yes, the other part of that is we had no choice to do this, right? There was gun to our head. Yeah, okay. Um, tell me about um. So it's my understanding Blue McKenzie has no onsite parking. Is that accurate?
Uh, Blue McKenzie, uh, the one that is downtown was not going to have any onsite parking.
So what um is there consideration to existing transportation systems, i.e. Um, all the people are going to be occupying Blue McKenzie, you're going to park on the streets. Uh, have you folks looked at how that's going to impact the streets and the? Neighbor, uh, local neighborhoods there?
Um, it looks like Clayton McKeaton is actually still on. Clayton, are you still?
I am.
I'll take this one.
Okay.
Actually.
Thank you, Christina.
So, yeah, so um, and this is a little bit off topic, but so the downtown has not. Has been planned for a long time to be part of what's called the downtown exception zone. There is no onsite parking that is required. Um, in the downtown mixed-use plan district boundary, and that's been in place for um. A lot, quite a while, um, decades. The Blue McKenzie project that you're referencing was a um Springfield Economic Development Agency. Project where we were um negotiating for a loan for construction of a building that received site plan approval. Um, unfortunately, because of the economic conditions, right now, the bank um failures in the spring and e- and interest rates, that project is not economically feasible at this time. So the last direction we have from the Springfield Economic Development Agency Board is to negotiate with the property owners around other um. To maybe obtain other properties or to change that project. So um, it's a little bit off topic for this meeting, but um. That project was originally approved to consistent with all the land use plans that exist today for downtown Springfield, but recognizing that um. You know, different versions of the project may make it more financially feasible. That's what the Springfield Economic Development Agency is looking to do in the future.
Okay, okay, but we're talking about uh um facilities not providing parking for um. Folks, um, so they're going to park on the street and I'm just trying to understand if we've looked at the impacts that are going to happen. I mean, we can wish they didn't, but they're, you know, folks are going to have vehicles one way or the other, electric otherwise.
The only place that we have examined what the impacts of not having parking requirements would be is in the downtown area. There was a twenty-ten. Um, parking study for downtown that was done um. Around the time that the parking zones were put into place and it looked at the parking demand, um, what would be needed if infill happened and additional parking wasn't provided. Um, and concluded that there was sufficient on-street parking for the downtown area to develop. Now that is just within the existing downtown Springfield that has for. Over a decade not had um any required minimum parking. I believe there may be s- similar analysis done for. Glenwood, which has the same standards, or that will be part of an upcoming master plan piece. For the rest of the city, we have not. Done that study or looked at that, and we do expect that there will be enforcement issues and that the city will have to de- deli- the city council has talked about. There will have to be additional resources at some point um allocated to on-street parking enforcement. Uh, or to parking enforcement when people park, start to park areas that weren't intended for cars, because that's what people tend to do. They tend to not stop driving their cars. They just park them. And in, you know, per, unpermitted areas or they block accesses, um, park on lawns and that type of thing.
So, so we fully expect to have, to expend additional funds for this parking requirement that we're creating with this um code change.
We do expect that removing all minimum parking requirements will result in a greater need for parking enforcement. Fire, you know, access lane enforcement and that type of um issues in the city.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to throw myself in the queue um before uh taking your question, Commissioner Buck, really quickly. I was just curious, um, Drew, if there are any. Um, requirements around the sizing or capacity of any potential solar panels that need to be installed um. When there is a parking lot of uh size that requires um solar.
That is an excellent question and one that I do not have an answer for.
Yeah, no problem. Just curious. Um, yeah, similar to, to um, I think the other uh question we have about how we determine that or how that fifteen hundred dollar. Uh, amount was determined to. Um, all right, uh, Commissioner Buck?
Thank you, Commissioner Salzer. Um, so we're anticipating. Uh, you know, just kind of responding to what I'm, I, I believe I'm hearing Christina, you say. We're, we're, by taking away the minimum requirement, we're anticipating the reduction of parking. Overall, which is going to increase enforcement. Um. And so I guess I'm curious, uh, you know, as this topic has been discussed before. What are expectations around alternatives? So if people, people are not, if we want people to reduce their driving or, you know, the need to park. What are their alternatives going to be um potentially? Uh, there's no, my understanding is um LTD is under no obligation. Uh, to, to provide additional routes or, or infrastructure that way, um, nor are there other alternatives that would be required. Um. But I'm just wondering what those options may be because it seems. To me that if, if we're trying to enforce something with. With an alternative, with, without an alternative that people can. Kind of turn to, I think there's going to be ripple effects. People can't access businesses, you know, and those sort of things. So I'm just curious about those. Those alternatives to um driving and parking downtown and, and or elsewhere in city.
Yeah, so down, again, downtown wouldn't be changing because that has been the same and there's good access to transit. So I think downtown where people have encountered difficulty with. Finding, to the extent there's a, there's a hard time finding parking, they're able to access bike paths that connect to downtown or transit. Um, I think that your question is a very good one and it's one that we asked and raised with the state when those rules were adopted. Um, because there's nothing in the rules that mandate the transit providers to increase transit as um parking becomes more inconvenient. So I, I unfortunately don't know the answer to that question, except to say I think you're correct. I think there will be spillover and ripple effects. And the position we're in right now is going to be reactive um probably to those. Um, I think we will be as, you know. Drew can maybe talk more about this, but I think the next phase of um. The next phase that we would be working on under climate friendly and equitable community rules, or maybe not the next one, but a future phase would be ideally doing better, some better pedestrian and bike planning. And there's work going on right now that would improve our, um, and we're always working on this. We didn't need the state. Um, to mandate it, but there's work underway to make sidewalk connections that haven't existed in, in the city to make it easier to walk places. Um, bike ped projects are underway and those types of things will help. Uh, I think with that, with those spillover effects and.
Sure. Is it fair to say then, just to make sure I'm understanding you correctly, is it fair to say that? It's a recognized problem. When this, these mandates came down, we, that we recognize these problems and we're working on solutions, probably don't have all of them. But it's a problem that we know we need to solve.
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just to piggyback on that, the climate-friendly equitable communities also um. Calls for greater transportation dollars going to bike ped projects. There is another aspect that I am going to be working on here shortly and have been working on is this scenario planning. And so these are identifying greenhouse car, gas target emission. We're trying to lower these things. And so we have a number of implementation strategies that in- increase. Shared mobility, either bike share, um, dare I say it in Springfield, scooter share, but something to alleviate that parking demand. So, you know, it's. Trying to shift people from their single occupancy vehicle trips and potentially even shifting away from vehicle ownership altogether by increasing that shared mobility and greater spending on biking and walking. Projects in the city of Springfield and statewide.
Thank you. Commissioner Dignam?
Thank you. I, I want to put in a word for. Others like me who drive a gasoline-powered vehicle and intend on driving a gasoline-powered vehicle until such time as it is ripped out of my hands. Uh, I, I, I just have to object to a code requirement that is going to dedicate forty percent of parking. In any new development over a certain minimum size to electrical vehicle charging station parking. It's. Like, I mean, that's just a rhetorical comment, I guess. I, I don't expect anybody to answer that, but to me that is uh very short-sighted. Thank you.
Thank, and I will note that this is our time for questions and any discussion we can take during the um actual public hearing later. Commissioner Stowe?
I'll hold my comment to the public hearing.
Thank you. Do we have any other um questions on this item? All right, thank you. And with that, um, that concludes the second work session item. And I know we are um eating into our time for the um. Public hearing, but we do have one more item um to finish in this work session. And that is, I'm going to fall to Planning Manager Mark Rust to present minor code amendments to the Springfield Development Code.
Yes, good evening commissioners. I'm going to try and use both my laptop here in the room and the audio of the um. Room audio, so hopefully that works okay. I'm going to try, if, if there's problems there, I can switch it up, but let me share. My screen here, hopefully. Give me a second. Try and make that full screen, let's see. So hopefully um that looks like it's coming through. Okay, so. This third item is hopefully fairly minor compared to the other two. As some of you may be aware. We did a, a fairly large um comprehensive code update to the Springfield Development Code last year. It was adopted July of last year. A joint um adoption by the city council. For Springfield and the Board of Accounting Commissioners that had also gone through a joint planning commission hearing process. So through that process. The number I throw out is roughly maybe sixty or seventy percent of the overall development code was updated or changed. We knew going into that that there would be things that we would need to come back and clean up. And so that's part of what we're doing tonight is proposing some minor cleanup types of changes. Most of these are what could be considered typos or just missed citations or references, that type of thing. And. And I'm going to give just a few quick examples. And for the complete list, you'll see the legislative amendments in the packet tonight. So as the other proposals tonight, it's also a type four legislative amendment, subject to the same process and approval criteria. I'm going to make this pretty brief tonight. There's kind of three broad categories that these changes fall into. There's ones that impact the land use districts themselves, those are the residential, commercial, industrial mixed use kind of zones or land use districts. There's also different development standards, those are the approval criteria or standards for development, such as like it says here, driveway standards, different things on those lines. And then lastly, there's the review process piece of our code and how applications are processed. So there's some cases where those mostly citations related to those process pieces and some terminology needed some minor updates. There was one kind of oversight, a fairly large section of code, our campus industrial section of the code was really for the most part not updated. There were some minor changes to it, but it was inadvertently left out of the adoption ordinance when we did do that large update last year. We, we recognized that pretty quickly after the adoption took place and our city attorney's office deemed that as, that oversight as a scrivener's error. And so it's not that we've been without campus industrial for a year, but just as to be overly cautious and to make sure we're covered, we're proposing to re-adopt that pre-existing campus industrial section as part of this code update. The section of code in the packet tonight that you'll see for the campus industrial does not show any track changes or legislative format in that we're just re-adopting what was pre-existing. This is an example from the land use district section of where we've, we had changed terminology. We previously had terminology that called things, called out bed and breakfast facilities. Similarly, we had other terminology for boarding and rooming houses. We basically combined those two terms and got rid of them and just adopted this term short-term rental. So this is a case where we missed one of those bed and breakfast facility citations in the Washburn District. So we're proposing here to update that term. That's an example of a terminology update that was missed previously. There's, this is kind of an example of some typos or other grammatical type things that were missed or to make things read more clearly where we're proposing some minor edits. The, the number in this slide, the 30 foot versus 32 is for consistency. There was a contradiction in the table that this section references. The table said 30, this section said 32, so to rectify those two numbers, it was intended to be 30. So we're changing that, that's an example of a minor change. And then lastly, here's another, an area where we removed altogether from our procedures section, this final site plan equivalent process. And so however, this was left in a table, it's an interesting thing if you've worked with Word, when you do a Word search, it, it often doesn't search within tables. So I think this was missed for that reason, but so we're proposing to eliminate that here since all other references were removed to this type of process. So with I'm not sure whose sound that is, maybe they could mute themselves. We're getting sound from somebody. I'm, I'm almost through here. So I'll just wrap up to say that the same approval standards that the other two presentations proposed, these are addressed in the staff report for tonight. And similarly, the next steps associated with the process, looking at, once we engage in the public hearing for this item later tonight, we'll be looking for a recommendation from the planning commission and then this would ultimately move on to a joint public hearing with the city council and board accounting commissioners. So with that, I'll end and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mark, for that presentation. And again, thanks to you and all the staff who worked on these amendments. So do we have any questions from any commissioners on either commission for this item? All right, seeing none, we will, I'll now conclude, that concludes our third work session item. And I move to, and I will adjourn the Springfield Planning Commission work session.
And I will adjourn the Lane County Planning Commission work session.
Thank you. So we have eaten into a little bit of our time, just about 15 minutes into our time for the regular session, public hearing. I believe we do have some leeway to take a, a brief five-minute break if people need to stretch their legs. If anyone would like to take a break, now is the time to speak up, otherwise we'll move straight into the, the next, the public hearing. All right, seeing none, we will now move into the public hearing. So good evening and thank you to all who are joining us in this virtual meeting format. We will now hold a public hearing to hear testimony on the matter of adopting amendments to the Springfield Development Code. We are conducting this meeting jointly with the Lane County Planning Commission as the proposed Development Code amendments must be adopted by both jurisdictions. To provide some context, the planning commissions are not the final decision makers in this matter. After the planning commissions have reviewed the proposed amendments and other relevant material provided by staff, including testimony from the public, each planning commission will make a recommendation to its own elected officials, those being the Lane County Board of Commissioners and the Springfield City Council respectively. Then city council and the board of commissioners will consider their planning commission's recommendations and will hold their own joint public hearing before making their final decisions on the proposed amendments. Before we open the public hearing, I want to let the public know a bit about the planning commissions and our role. We are unpaid volunteers appointed by the Springfield City Council and Lane County Board of Commissioners respectively. As planning commissioners, we're committed to balancing all of the community's needs and making the best recommendations we possibly can based on city and county policies and Oregon laws for us and for future generations. I want to thank everyone for their patience and flexibility as we work within this virtual meeting format. As always, feel free to contact staff if there is testimony you are not able to provide or wish to provide in a different manner. I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute and your camera off until you are called to provide public testimony. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom or press star nine if joining by phone. If you are attending in person, please fill out a request to speak card and present it to the planning commission assistant. When called upon to speak, please state your name and mailing address and please keep your comments to three minutes. Now for a brief statement regarding conflicts of interest. There are two types of conflicts of interest, actual conflicts and potential conflicts. An actual conflict exists when the planning commissioners or their family or business would financially benefit or suffer from a decision by the commission. Commissioners with actual conflicts of interest must recuse themselves. A potential conflict exists when planning commissioners or their family or business could possibly financially benefit from a decision by the commission. Commissioners must disclose a potential conflict, including the nature of the conflict. And we have noted these conflicts of interest in our previous work session, but we will now ask planning commissioners to restate those conflicts of interest that were stated before. All right, so I'll now ask planning, Springfield Planning Commissioners specifically to disclose any potential conflicts of interest and I'll start. So I have two potential conflicts of interest. One is that I am a homeowner who owns real property in the city of Springfield and the other is that I work for Homes for Good Housing Agency, which is a real estate developer that operates in the city of Springfield. And next, I'll call on Commissioner Buck.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Chair. I have two potential conflicts of interest. One is I do own a home in Springfield and two is I am an insurance agent that does business in the area.
Thank you, Commissioner Schmuck.
A homeowner and no conflicts of interest, other than that.
Thank you. Vice Chair Rhodes-Dye?
I am a homeowner in Springfield and also a potential conflict of interest as a Realtor doing business in Springfield.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson.
One potential conflict of interest is that I am a homeowner in Springfield and no other potential conflicts of interest, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stowe?
The potential conflict of interest is that I'm a homeowner in Springfield, thank you.
Thank you.
And I will now ask if there are any Lane County Planning Commissioners that have an actual potential conflict of interest. If you do have one to disclose, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands, I will go from there.
Sorry, looking for the raise hand icon, but didn't find it. So I'll just speak up, Jeff showed here, potential conflict of interest, working for Jerry's Home Improvement with a store in Spady of Springfield.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will note that testimony presented at this public hearing should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria or other criteria that the speaker believes apply to the decision. In general, the approval criteria require that any plan amendments must be consistent with the applicable statewide planning goals, the metro plan and Springfield Comprehensive Plan. Staff have prepared findings to demonstrate that that is the case with the proposed amendments, which are included in the materials for this meeting. For Springfield, the applicable criteria are Springfield Development Code, Section 5.6.115 and 5.14.135 and statewide planning goals and the Oregon administrative rules.
For Lane County, the applicable approval criteria are Lane Code Chapters 10.600/15, applicable land use regulations, 12.100.050, methods of adoption and amendments and statewide planning goals and Oregon administrative rules.
Thank you. And with that, I am now opening the public hearing for the Springfield Planning Commission and I invite Chair Koschinsky to open the public hearing for Lane County.
The Lane County Planning Commission Public Hearing is now open.
Thank you. Before we begin receiving public testimony, we will have a brief presentation from staff to introduce the project and to summarize the staff report. I'd like to introduce Springfield Senior Planner Haley Campbell to begin the presentation on our first item.
Thank you, Chair Salazar. I'm going to share my screen. This presentation will go quite a bit shorter than the work session, about seven minutes. It'll also be pre-recorded, so please mute yourselves and we'll go from there. Hello, and thank you for attending this hearing. In this hearing to discuss the stormwater post-construction requirements update. My name is Haley Campbell, I'm a senior planner with the city of Springfield and the project manager for this code amendment. In a minute, I will start the presentation. As this presentation is pre-recorded, I ask that you mute yourselves until the end. Stormwater is an important part of the community's effort to improve water quality, protect fish habitat and protect properties from flooding. Because stormwater runoff from urban areas is one of the main sources of water pollution and alteration of hydrology, it is regulated under the Federal Clean Water Act. In Oregon, the Department of Environmental Quality, or DEQ, implements the requirements within the Clean Water Act on behalf of the Environmental Protection Agency. The MS4 permit requirements are the primary mechanism for ensuring our water bodies are swimable and fishable. These permit requirements cover public education and outreach, elimination of illegal discharges to the stormwater system, preventing erosion at construction sites and more. Directing runoff from urban areas to post-construction site runoff controls such as rain gardens and swales is one of the most effective ways to recreate natural hydrology and remove pollutants from stormwater runoff. The city of Springfield is mandated by its MS4 permit to require post-construction stormwater controls at public and private developments. This includes building new impervious surface and the replacement of old impervious surface. As discussed earlier, the MS4 permit requires the city to reduce discharges of pollutants and address stormwater runoff from new development and redevelopment project sites in its coverage area. There are seven main components of the permit. The first is that we must implement all program elements by February 2024. The second is that we must adopt through ordinance or other regulatory mechanism, a size requirement for project sites that discharge stormwater to the MS4 and create or replace 5,000 square feet or more of impervious surface area or for development projects that disturb one or more acres of land. Next, we must identify, minimize or eliminate barriers to techniques intended to minimize impervious surfaces. This includes the installation of low-impact development or vegetated stormwater controls. The fourth creates a numeric stormwater retention requirement to minimize off-site discharge of precipitation. Springfield has implemented a volume-based standard where you must retain the first 1.4 inches of rainfall from a storm event. For projects that are unable to meet that standard, they must remove at least 80% of total suspended solids before they discharge to the public system. Finally, staff must continue to review and approve plans for consistency with the ordinance and development code, ensure that all installed stormwater controls are operated and maintained to meet site performance standards and provide education and outreach to the general public about the impact of stormwater runoff on water bodies to mitigate those impacts. This request is an amendment to the Development Code and a type four application under Springfield Development Code 5.1.600. Amendments include various sections that involve the use of stormwater, specifically chapters three, four, five, six, and the creation of appendices B through H. This includes section 4.3.110 for stormwater management and the addition of specific words and terms that define stormwater treatment and facilities. Because this is a type four amendment, it also requires review and recommendation by the Springfield Planning Commission and the Lane County Planning Commission due to an intergovernmental agreement. Through this IGA, Springfield administered the permit requirements within the UGB. Given the nature of the code amendments, the land use regulations are subject to this IGA. The approval criteria for this proposal are contained in Springfield Development Code 5.6.115, which covers amendments to refinement plans, planned districts and the Development Code. They are shown on the screen and require conformance with the metro plan, applicable state statutes and applicable statewide planning goals and administrative rules. The findings for these approval criteria can be found in the staff report. This request is reviewed as a type four legislative amendment to the Springfield Development Code, which requires review and a recommendation by the planning commission and ultimately adoption of ordinance by city council. Since the stormwater development criteria apply to areas outside the city limits and the city has an intergovernmental agreement with Lane County, the Lane County Board of Commissioners must also co-adopt the amendments for them to apply outside city limits. The next step is for the planning commission to meet again on September 5th to allow for ballot measure 56 notice. ORS 227.186 requires the local government to mail a notice to every landowner whose property is proposed to be quote rezoned as a result of adoption or amendment of a proposed ordinance. Rezoning includes an ordinance that amends or adopts regulations that limit or prohibit land uses previously allowed in the affected land use district. Specifically, the proposed code amendments affect the uses allowed in the drinking water protection area by prohibiting stormwater infiltration facilities within 100 feet of any drinking water wellhead. Because this amendment would prohibit stormwater infiltration and affect property setbacks, measure 56 notice is warranted. This notice was not provided within 21 days of the initial hearing on August 1st. However, the notice issue will, will be cured by continuing the public hearing with the Springfield and Lane County Planning Commissions until September 5th, 2023. At the September 5th work session and public hearing, we expect the commissions to make a recommendation to the city council and board of commissioners who will hold a joint work session and joint hearing on the proposed amendments on November 6th, 2023.
All right, thank you for that presentation Haley and thank you again to you and all staff who've worked on these amendments, we really appreciate your work. Now is next, next is our time for testimony from interested parties. I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. to please keep yourselves on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. If you would like to speak, to speak, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom or press star nine if joining by phone. If you are here in person, please fill out a request to speak card and present it to the Planning Commission Assistant. When called upon to speak, please state your name and mailing address, and please keep your comments to three minutes. Sarah, do we have anyone in the Jesse Maine room who'd like to speak?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. And Rachel, do we have anyone uh, in the good pastor room who'd like to speak?
Uh, good evening. Um, I did not receive anyone who RSVP'd to um, attend the public hearing in the good past room, so I, I don't have anyone. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Rachel. Um, and I will now call on people who have joined us by Zoom. If you are joining us by Zoom, please raise your hand. All right, seeing none. Do we have anyone who's joined us by telephone? All right, and seeing none, we'll now move on um to see if any commissioners have any clarifying questions on the facts of the proposal um, before we move to our, our next um item of, of whether to close the hearing or not. All right, seeing no questions from our commissioners. It is now time to determine if we need to continue the hearing or hold the record open for submission of additional information to be considered by the Planning Commissioners before our deliberations. As mentioned in the staff report, ballot measure fifty six notice is warranted because the proposed code amendments affect the uses allowed in the drinking water protection area by prohibiting stormwater infant infiltration facilities within one hundred within one hundred feet of any drinking water wellhead. This amendment would prohibit stormwater infiltration in the setback area and affect property setbacks. The notice was not provided within twenty one days of this hearing. However, the notice issue will be cured by continuing the public hearing with the Springfield and Lane County Planning Commissions until September fifth, twenty twenty three. Unless there are any objections from Springfield uh, from planning commissioners or staff, the Springfield uh, Planning Commission hearing will now continue. Are there any objections? Seeing none, the Springfield Planning Commission Public Hearing is open until spring, till September fifth, twenty twenty three. Written testimony received by September fifth, twenty twenty three at five P M will be forwarded to and considered by the Lane County and Springfield Planning Commissions. Written testimony received after that date will be forwarded to the Lane County Board of Commissioners and the Springfield City Council for their consideration, along with the recommendations from the Planning Commission. Written testimony can be submitted to Haley Campbell, Senior Planner.
The Lane County Planning Commission.
One second, sorry. Can I, I don't want to cut you off. I just want to correct something. Written comments can be submitted at the public hearing. So um, it says five P M. That's not correct. Sorry, I apologize. I thought that was caught in an earlier draft of the script. Written comments can be submitted through the continued public hearing. Um, and that public hearing will also be at seven P M on that date. I want to make sure both of those are stated.
Thank you for that correction, Christina. I apologize for not catching that earlier.
No problem.
The Lane County Planning Commission Public Hearing will continue until September fifth. The record will remain open for written testimony as explained by Commissioner Salazar and uh, the Springfield attorney.
All right, thank you. And with that, we'll move on to our next um, item. Um, which is a second public hearing this evening. As mentioned previously, there are two types of conflicts of interest, actual conflicts and potential conflicts. An actual conflict exists when the planning commissioners or their family or business would financially benefit or suffer from a decision by the commission. Commissioners with actual conflicts of interest must recuse themselves. A potential conflict exists when planning commissioners or their family or business could possibly financially benefit from a decision by the commission. Commissioners must disclose a potential conflict of interest, including the nature of the conflict. And I'll now um, go through another roll call of the Springfield Planning Commissioners, starting with myself. Um, I have two potential conflicts of interest, one being a homeowner in Springfield and the other working for a real estate developer, Homes for Good Housing Agency who develops in Springfield. Uh, Commissioner Buck.
Yes, two potential conflicts of interest, one um, that I own homes in Springfield and one that I am a practicing uh, real uh, insurance agent in the area.
Thank you, Commissioner Schmunk.
A homeowner, no other conflicts.
Thank you, Commissioner Stowe.
A homeowner, no other conflicts.
Thank you, Vice Chair Rhodessey.
Uh, two potential conflicts of interest as a homeowner in Springfield and a Realtor working in Springfield.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson.
Uh, one potential conflict of interest as a homeowner in Springfield and none other. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll note that these are, uh, we're noting uh, potential conflicts for the parking code update specifically.
Are there any Lane County planning commissioners that have an actual or potential conflict of interest? And if you do, you can just speak up.
Commissioner Cho, I work for Jerry's Home Improvement with a retail store in the city of Springfield, so I'm declaring a potential conflict of interest.
Thank you. Um, testimony presented at this public hearing should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria or other criteria that the speaker believes apply to the decision. In general, the approval criteria require that any plan amendments must be consistent with the applicable statewide planning goals, the metro plan and Springfield Comprehensive Plan. Staff have prepared findings to demonstrate that is the case with the proposed amendments which are included in the materials for this meeting. For Springfield, the applicable criteria are Springfield Development Code, Section five point six point one one five and five point one four point one three five and statewide planning goal, goals slash Oregon administrative rules.
For Lane County, the applicable approval criteria are Lane Code chapters one zero dot six zero zero hyphen fifteen applicable land use regulations, one two dot one zero zero dot one, excuse me, zero five zero methods of adoption and amendment and statewide planning goals, Oregon administrative rules.
Thank you. And with that, I am now opening the planning, the public hearing for the Springfield Planning Commission and I invite Chair Koshinsky to open the public hearing for Lane County.
The Lane County Planning Commission Public Hearing is now open.
Thank you. We will now have brief presentation from staff to introduce the project and to summarize the staff report. I'd like to introduce Springfield Plant Transportation Planner Andrew Larson to begin the presentation. Take it away, Andrew.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, my name is Drew Larson. I am the transportation planner for the city of Springfield, and tonight we are discussing code amendments to uh, the Springfield Development Code regarding climate-friendly and equitable communities. Um, these are specifically the parking reforms um that is part of the climate-friendly and equitable communities uh, commonly referred to as CPEC. So a little bit of background on uh, the climate-friendly and equitable communities. The proposed amendments are reviewed as a Type Four legislative amendment to adopt amendments to the Springfield Development Code applicable within the city of Springfield's urban growth boundary. Uh, this action involves amendments to all parking requirements within Springfield's urban growth boundary, including eliminating minimum parking requirements and adding provisions for electrical charging, preferential parking for car pools and van pools, and special standards for parking lots over one half acre. The proposed code amendments apply within the city of Springfield's urbanizable area, including the urban growth boundary areas and city limits. Because the code will apply outside city limits tonight as a joint planning commission uh, with both Lane County and the city of Springfield. The CPEC rules were a product of Governor Kate Brown's executive order to address our changing climate. The goals are to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by increasing shared mobility while decreasing single occupancy vehicle trips. Tonight's public hearing is discussing the removal of minimum, minimum parking mandates to provide additional housing choices by freeing up land that is currently required for off-street parking or might encourage redevelopment of parking areas that are underutilized. Uh, the first phase of the parking reforms uh, that went into effect at the beginning of twenty twenty three implemented a no parking mandate within a half mile of frequent transit network uh, essentially along Main Street and the MX lines here in Springfield. Uh, the second phase is broader in scope and requires the city ca- city council and Lane County Board of Commissioners to adopt amendments to, to comply with the remaining parking rules, which is topic of this public hearing. Uh, there were three options provided by the D L C D. Um, and that staff presented the Springfield City Council uh, and was, and, and which we were directed to pursue option one to remove all minimal parking requirements in the urbanizable area as well as implement requirements for wind parking is provided. So City Council has provided policy direction to repeal all parking mandates. So the other two options were not explored with tonight's uh, public hearing. Um, so kind of overview of the proposed amendments uh, again are to remove minimum vehicle parking mandates citywide. Uh, this does not preclude developers, homeowners, from removing their parking or providing parking if they see fit. Um, there, there are provisions to provide preferential carpool and van pool parking spaces for employees. That's if uh, an employer is providing fifty or more parking spaces. They must dedicate five percent of these provided spaces um, to carpool and van pool parking spaces. They must be close to the door. Uh, the primary employee entrance, that is. Um, clearly marked and only designated or only available to the designated shared mobility uh, or ride-share program um, designated by the employer. Uh, additionally, multi-unit residential um, or mixed-use buildings with five or more residential dwelling units must provide uh, forty percent of their spaces with electrical vehicle charging infrastructure. Um, the infrastructure required for, per the Oregon Revised Statute uh, must provide conduit only, not necessarily the charging pedestal for at least a level two charger, and that's O R S four five five point four one seven, if you're curious. Um, and then finally, parking lot standards for lots, uh, parking lots half acre or larger. This uh, requires developers to install, to choose one of these three options is to either install solar panels. Um, and in the proposed code amendments, the solar panel kilowatt per new parking space is point five. Um, or they can pay a minimum, uh, a minimum of fifteen hundred dollars into a city-county fund to support solar and wind energy development. Uh, they must provide a forty percent continuous tree canopy or some sort of combination of those three. Um, that is the summary of the proposed amendments this evening. Uh, comment was received from the D L C D about regarding the code amendments. And we made two changes to the proposed code from the packet in the, in the planning commission packet. And one is to clearly define how parking lots are measured, uh, being that they're the perimeter of all new parking spaces, maneuvering lanes, maneuvering areas. Essentially, all vehicle surface areas is how we uh, would measure large parking lots to determine if they're a half acre or larger. Um, and then another one for the carpool and van pool parking requirements. They wanted uh, some simplification and to ensure that it is clear that carpooling and van pooling provide for commercial, industrial, and mixed use uh, as well as, you know, some multifamily residential. Um, and we had initially had industrial institutional government and office, which wasn't quite as clear. One of the other things that they had mentioned on is that there's a provision in the Oregon Administrative Rules that on-street parking is able to be converted to either like a parklet, uh, new bike corrals or green infrastructure such as a stormwater infiltration. Um, green infrastructure, you know, like landscaping, those types of things. So this is an existing city practice, but it's got to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis by the city uh, traffic engineer. And so I'm proposing to add a new finding to the staff report, finding thirty nine um that states this. As mentioned earlier, the approval criteria is Springfield Development Code five point six point one one five. Uh, and we must demonstrate compliance with the metro plan and its subsequent plans, uh, Springfield Comprehensive Plan, the Transportation System Plan, any neighborhood refinement plans, uh, two applicable state statutes, and three, the applicable statewide planning goals and administrative rules. The staff report and findings have demonstrated compliance with the state mandate Oregon administrative rules as well as found compliance with the metro plan, state statutes, and planning goals. So this evening, we are looking for both planning, planning commissions, Lane County and city of Springfield to uh, make a recommendation to the City Council and ultimately Lane County Board of Commissioners to adopt the proposed amendments scheduled for a joint work session and public hearing on November sixth, twenty twenty three. Thank you much, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Drew, and again, thank you to you and to um, all staff who worked on this presentation and um, on pulling this amendment together for us to consider. Next, we'll move to testimony from interested parties. I would like, like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom or press star nine if joining by phone. If you are here in person, please fill out a request to speak card and present it to the Planning Commission Assistant. When called upon to speak, please state your name and mailing address. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Sarah, do we have anyone in the Jesse Maine room who would like to speak?
Uh, not at this time.
Thank you. Rachel, um, anyone in the good pastor room who would like to speak?
Nope, I have no one signed up to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I will now call on people who have joined us via Zoom. Again, if you would like to provide testimony via Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. All right, seeing none, do we have anyone who has joined us via uh, telephone? All right, seeing none. Um, before we close the public hearing, I'll take uh, clarifying questions from commissioners, and I will note that um, this is again a time for clarifying questions. Um, we will have an opportunity after we close the um, the hearing and the record to um to uh, take a motion, and at that time, we will have opportunities for discussion. Um, so we will save any discussion for um, any potential motion that comes forward. Do we have any commissioners who have clarifying questions on the facts of the proposal? Commissioner Snyder.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I just wanted, these are clarifying questions, uh, and I appreciate the, the work uh, of Drew to pull up some of this information uh, between meetings, or maybe it was just another thing, but I wa- I want to clarify that the you know, if somebody chooses to provide parking and they, they need to follow the electric car requirements, those are spots that are wired for electricity, but they are not specifically designated as in not the same designation that the carpool spots have of only electric parking. Is that, is that your interpretation as well?
Yeah, so they only need to provide the conduit to serve future electrical pedestals, but they would be available to customers. They'd be available for employees uh, until I would assume electrical pedestals are installed, in which case they would be electrical charging parking spaces. But there's nothing in the code that requires them to dedicate that, so they're not the same as the carpool van pool dedication.
Got it. Thank you for the clarification.
All right, seeing no other questions, um, it is now time to determine if we need to continue the pu- the hearing or hold the record open for submission of additional information to be considered by the Planning Commissions before our deliberations. Unless there are any objections from planning commissioners or staff, the Springfield Planning Commission hearing will now be closed. Seeing no objections, the Springfield Planning Commission Public Hearing is now closed.
The Lane County Planning Commission Public Hearing is now closed.
Are there any objections to closing the record? As a reminder, any information that comes after the Planning Commission says clo- have closed our record will be provided to the elected officials as part of their public hearing process. So any objections to closing the record? All right, seeing none, the plant, the Springfield Planning Commission has closed the record.
The Lane County Planning Commission record is now closed.
The hearing and record are now closed, and the commissioners will now have an opportunity to deliberate as a group. To facilitate the group deliberation, the commissioners will begin with their respective motions in favor of approving the proposal. If we were ready to discuss. If we were ready to discuss discuss the application, I will entertain a motion from the Springfield Planning Commission.
So is this uh, this isn't the move to approve the order of recommendation, this is. Move that we discuss?
This is a move, we'll we'll take on an a motion on the actual item, and then. Once we have a motion, we have an opportunity to discuss the motion itself, and that is the motion being the item before us. So.
Yeah, and as a reminder, per our last Roberts Rules of Order training, the formal procedure is to make the motion to approve. And then.
So I move to approve the order and recommendation that is in the agenda packet as attachment one with the changes to the code or findings.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Well, second.
We have a motion and a second.
If we are ready to discuss the application, I will entertain a motion from the Lane County Planning Commission.
I'll make that motion. It's the same as the Springfield Commissioner made.
And second.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion on the motions? Commissioner Stowe?
Thank you, Chair Salazar. Um I I believe we should have passed this this motion. And I do so especially because I challenge each of you on the busiest traffic day of the year in Springfield. That is uh Black Friday after Thanksgiving to go out and look at all available traffic or uh parking spaces in all the available locations. You will find, as I did, that there are still parking available on the busiest traffic day of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dignan.
To support the motion, I appreciated Sn- Snyder's clarifying question and the response. Uh that these uh uh starting may uh issue about the. Forty percent electric charging requirement dedication, but Stephen clarified that it isn't dedicated. Those at least are term open to vehicles, therefore I intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Buck.
Well, thank you. Um I think that uh. I'm I'm in support of the motion, and I believe that these are steps we need to take. I just wanted to state for the record that. Um I feel many of the mandates uh do leave the future problems for us to solve. Um and and so I just want to kind of express uh. That piece of, I feel like this is kind of a repeated thing from the state that we've seen over the course of time. Where mandates are given to us that are intended to solve one problem and and do they they do lead to other challenges. Um which I find unfortunate. That having been said, I I do support the motion. Um because, you know, we 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 need to go ahead with this, and I think that staff have done a good job putting something together for us.
Thank you. I'll also note that um I know that um we as Springfield Planning Commission and the Springfield City Council has spent a lot of time. Already uh deliberating and discussing um these requirements and especially um the three options to consider. Um knowing that um the city council has given the um direction to pursue option one as as we gave that recommendation. Um that I believe that staff has worked ably to pro- provide um. The path forward for obtaining um option one um with these code amendments, and um. I believe any other path would um really jeopardize our ability to meet that um required deadline. It's unfortunate that we have a deadline. Um but I think this um adopting this would work within the spirit of um the deliberations that we've already had. And I know that um city council, once we make our recommendation, whatever that recommendation is, that city council will have a lot more deliberations on this item as well. Any other item or any other discussion? All right, we have a motion with no amendments. Um I will now um take a uh roll call vote. Um. I vote aye.
And can you restate the motion one more time um for Springfield?
Absolutely. So the motion is to approve the order and recommendation that is in the agenda packet as attachment one. Is that correct?
And then with the additional changes from?
Including the two code amendments and finding thirty-nine in the staff report addressing D L C D's comments.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um I vote aye, Vice Chair Rhodes die.
Aye.
Commissioner Buck?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
And Commissioner Schmuck?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Uh I will call the question of uh the motion to approve the order and recommendations that is in the agenda packet as amendment one.
I'm sorry, uh Chair Kaminsky, I just realized that I forgot uh um to take Commissioner Thompson's vote. I apologize for that, Commissioner Thompson.
Uh I vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Um motion still passes unanimously on our hands. Thank you.
Um so we're, Lane County Planning Commission is considering the motion to approve the. Order and recommendation that is in the agenda packet as attachment one, including the two code amendments and finding thirty-nine in the staff report addressing. D L C D's comments. Um I will do a roll call vote. Uh I vote aye. Uh Commissioner Cho?
Aye.
Commissioner Dignan?
Aye.
Commissioner Hadley?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Me?
Uh Commissioner Lay?
Aye.
Commissioner Pecock?
Aye.
Commissioner Snyder?
Aye.
And Commissioner Whittle?
Yes.
And Commissioner Kayler, could you repeat your vote again? I didn't quite hear it.
I said aye.
Okay, great. Thank you. I didn't want to assume an aye. So um. Uh the results of the motion are that the motion carries uh. Eight in favor, zero, nine in favor, and zero opposed and zero absent.
Thank you, and that concludes the second public hearing item. We are two down and one to go. We'll move on to the final hearing for the evening. As mentioned previously, there are two types of conflicts of interest. Actual conflicts of interest and potential conflicts. An actual conflict exists when the planning commissioners or their family or businesses. Would financially benefit or suffer from a decision by the commission. Commissioners with actual conflicts of interest must recuse themselves. A potential conflict exists when planning commissioners or their family or business. Could but could possibly financially benefit from a decision by the commission. Commissioners must disclose a potential conflict, including the nature of the conflict. I will now ask Springfield Planning Commissioners to please disclose any potential conflicts of interest for the parking code update. Personally, I have two potential conflicts of interest, one that I am a Springfield homeowner, and the second that I work for a real estate developer that operates in Springfield. Um Homes for Good Housing Agency. Commissioner Buck?
Oh, to clarify, this is for the minor code updates. I think you said the parking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I just want to clarify that we have moved on. It's not deja vu.
Excellent point. So this is for the minor code updates. My potential conflicts still stand. Uh Commissioner Buck?
Thank you, Chair. Uh two potential conflicts of interest. I own a home in Springfield, and uh I am a real, I'm a insurance agent in the area.
Thank you, Commissioner Stowe.
Potential conflict of interest that I'm a homeowner in Springfield.
Thank you, Commissioner Schmuck.
Homeowner in Springfield, no other conflicts of interest.
Thank you, Vice Chair Rhodes die.
Uh two potential conflicts of interest, one that I'm a homeowner in Springfield, and one that I'm a realtor working in Springfield.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson.
Uh one potential conflict of interest is I'm a homeowner in Springfield and no other conflicts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any Lane County planning commissioners that have an either an actual or potential conflict of interest? If so, please speak up now.
This is Commissioner Cho. This one seems like a stretch, but I'll say just in case uh that there's a potential conflict of interest, since I work for Jerry's Home Improvement with a store in Springfield.
Thank you, Commissioner Cho. Um I will now note the testimony presented at this public hearing should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. Or other criteria that the speaker believes apply to the decision. In general, the approval criteria require that any plan amendments must be consistent with the applicable statewide planning goals. The Metro Plan and Springfield Comprehensive Plan. Staff have prepared findings to demonstrate that is the case with the proposed amendments. Which are included in the materials for this meeting. For Springfield, the applicable criteria are Springfield Development Codes, section five-point-six-point-one-one-five. And five-point-one-four-point-one-three-five, and the statewide planning goals and and Oregon Administrative Rules.
Uh the Lane County applicable criteria are Lane Code chapters ten dot six hundred hyphen fifteen. Applicable land use regulations, twelve dot one hundred dot zero fifty, methods of ad- adoption and amendment. And statewide planning goals and Oregon Administrative Rules.
Thank you, Chair Koshinsky. And with that, I am opening, now opening the public hearing for the Springfield Planning Commission, and I invite Chair Koshinsky to open the public hearing for Lane County.
The Lane County Planning Commission Public Hearing is now open.
Thank you. We will now have a brief presentation from staff to introduce the project and to summarize the staff report for the minor code updates. I'd like to introduce Planning Manager Mark Russ to begin the presentation.
Thank you, Chairs, and thank you, Planning Commissioners. Mark Russ, City of Springfield Planning Manager. I'm going to share my, hopefully, are you not getting an echo at all? Hopefully, it sounds okay. I'm going to share my screen here again really quick. Bear with me. It's a slight delay. Let's see if that goes full screen. At one more time. There we go. So yeah, it's a fairly brief presentation here really quickly. Um this is uh. Proposed amendments for minor code changes. The file number for City of Springfield is eight-one-one-dash-twenty-three-dash-zero-zero-zero-one-two-six-dash-T Y P four. It's a type-four application. The um. As stated, there's a written staff report and findings supporting this, so I'll rely on that in its entirety. For the complete justification for the proposed amendments. However, I'll briefly summarize. Um the City of Springfield did last year in twenty-twenty-two adopt a major code update. The changes tonight reflects some minor corrections and typo-type changes that are needed. Um as a result of that major code update, there's some naming conventions, um some code citations, that sort of thing. I'll provide some brief examples of those. As stated, this is a type-four legislative amendment. Um it requires a recommendation by the planning commissions to the respective elected officials. We'll be seeking that tonight in a motion. Um there's kind of three broad categories of proposed amendments. There's amendments that affect the land use districts. Or zones that are in our development code, so examples like the residential land use district, commercial, industrial, mixed use, et cetera. A second broad category is development standards or approval criteria for different development. And then third is also our our review process and procedures for approving applications. So there's um some amendments that affect those. Code provisions. Another large category, though, also includes our our campus industrial zone. This entire section. Was inadvertently left out of our development code update last year. Um subsequent to that oversight, our city attorney's office deemed that as a scrupulous error. That it was not intended to be repealed and that we have been enforcing it um for the last year. However, as through out of an abundance of caution, we are proposing to re-adopt that or adopt that here as part of this proposal. Um just to remove any um. Question about that whole section. There are no proposed amendments, uh track changes or legislative. Um edits to that section. It is just being adopted as it previously existed. So just in terms of some brief examples, this is just a naming convention. We had removed the bed and breakfast terminology. It had been combined with other rooming and boarding type terminology for a broader term of short-term rental. This is one area. Of code that we missed updating that. So this is an example of just changing the terminology to match what was adopted everywhere else in the code. Some other minor edits and typos for clarification um and consistency. These um minor changes here are just for it to read better and also make more sense and be consistent. And then here's another example where we had altogether removed this final site plan equivalent process. This language was contained in the table and was missed previously, so we're proposing to remove it here um from the code now. As mentioned, the approval criteria, this is the Springfield Development Code Approval Criteria five-point-six-point-one-one-five that was referenced. These are the subsections. Um these are the applicable approval criteria for the City of Springfield. And the written staff report addressed these findings or these approval criteria with findings, and I'll rely on that um as the justification. And we are looking for a motion tonight for a recommendation of approval, and then this will ultimately go to another public hearing in front of the City of Springfield. City Council as well as a joint um matter if we get a recommendation from the Lane County Planning Commission to the Lane County Board of Commissioners. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Mark, and once again, thanks to you and to all staff who worked on um finding these items and and making these, working on these corrections. So next we'll move, work on, or next we'll move on to uh testimony from interested parties. I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute until you're, until you are called to provide public testimony. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom or press star nine if joining by phone. If you are here in person, please fill out a request to speak card and present it to the Planning Commission Assistant. When called upon to speak, please state your name and mailing address, and please keep your comments to three minutes. Sarah, do we have anyone in the Jesse Maine room who would like to speak?
Uh no, there's no one in the library meeting room.
Thank you. No problem. And Rachel, do we have anyone in good pastor room um or or whichever room you're in um who would like to speak?
No, I don't have anyone signed up for testimony. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um I will now call on folks who have joined us via Zoom. Again, if you would like to speak via Zoom, please um use the raise hand feature, and I'll call on you for testimony. All right, seeing none, we will now move to anyone who has joined us by telephone. All right, and seeing none, um we will now move to uh. Questions, clarifying questions. Um again, um as with our last item, we will take, this is our final time for clarifying questions. And uh we will please keep any discussion to um our time when we have a motion to discuss. All right, seeing no clarifying questions to staff, um it is now time to determine if we need to continue the hearing. Or hold the record open for submission of additional information to be considered by the planning commissions before our deliberations. Unless there are any objections from planning commissioners or staff, the Springfield Planning Can- Commission Hearing will now close. Seeing no objections, the Springfield Planning Commission Public Hearing is now closed.
The Lane County Planning Commission Public Hearing is now closed.
Thank you. We'll now cl- move to closing the record. Um are there any objections to closing the record? As a reminder, any information that comes after the planning commissions. Uh have closed our record will be provided to the elected officials as part of their public hearing process. Are there any objections to closing the record? Seeing none, the Springfield Planning Commission will, is, the Springfield Planning Commission Record is now closed.
The Lane County Planning Commission Record is now closed.
Thank you. The hearing and record are now closed, and the commissions will now have the opportunity to deliberate as a group. To facilitate the group deliberation, the commissions will begin with their respective motions. To facilitate the group deliberation, the commissions will begin with their respective motions in favor of approving the proposal. If we are ready to discuss the application, I will entertain a, a motion from the Springfield Planning Commission. Commissioner Buck?
I'd like to move that we adopt the recommendations as presented, uh, to, and in our packet.
All right, excellent. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. And for the record, that was, um, Vice Chair Rhodes Die who made the second.
I will now entertain a motion from the Lane County Planning Commission. We are ready to discuss the application.
I, uh, will make a motion that we forward a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to adopt the proposed amendments as presented.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or deliberation on the motions? All right, seeing none, I will now take a roll call of votes and apologize for not looking up. I'm going to read off the screen so I don't miss anybody. Um, so I vote aye. Commissioner Buck?
Aye.
Vice Chair Thompson, or Commissioner Thompson, excuse me.
Aye.
Commissioner Schmuck?
Aye.
Vice Chair Rhodes Die?
Aye.
And Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously with zero absent.
Um, I will now call roll for Lane County for the motion. Uh, I vote aye. Uh, Commissioner Cho?
Aye.
Commissioner Dingham?
Aye.
Commissioner Hadley?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Lay?
Aye.
Commissioner Peacock?
Aye.
Commissioner Snyder?
Aye.
Commissioner Whittle?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries nine in favor, zero opposed and zero absent.
Thank you. And on behalf of the planning commissions, thank you, um, definitely to all the staff and commissioners who have joined us for this marathon session. And, um, with that, the meeting of the Springfield Planning Commission is now adjourned.
The meeting of the Lane County Planning Commission is now adjourned.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.